To call the August 3rd Forest Lake Elementary School 14th meeting to order, please request for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, however, clerk, would you please say your name?
Senator Ray Vaughn?
Here.
Senator Parker Zaxton, Senator Haglund?
Here.
Senator Peterson?
Here.
Senator Waydell?
Here.
Senator Christensen?
Here.
Senator Texon?
Thank you, Senator Clerk. We will move on. It is time now to entertain a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
I'll move in.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by the sign of a eye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Ayes have it. Motion passes. We'll move to scheduled and unscheduled visitors. I see no green cards. Uh, Senator Haglund, do you want to report on the listening session?
I'll let you refer that.
Alright, we had two parents from Scandia show up to the listening session tonight and discuss some of the issues that were experienced last year and some of the steps they would like for us to take to address them going forward. And with that, we will move to student achievement. Forest Lake Elementary, Principal Ruby. Should put a divider up there. Let you guys get some. Oh, there. Okay.
Alright, good evening, uh, student ambassadors. Thanks for allowing me an opportunity to come and share a few things with Forest Lake Elementary. I have in years past kind of focused on one certain thing that's happened in our building or program or certain results from something that we've done. And this year I thought I'd do something a little different. Just take some time and just kind of go over highlights that happened throughout the year at Forest Lake Elementary to kind of highlight some of the special things that happened in our building and we're proud of. So we'll start. So our target today is just to share some highlights of the 22, 23 school year and then just look forward to some of the things as well. As you know, each of our schools in our district, our PBIS schools, we work in positive behavior intervention supports. And at Forest Lake Elementary, we use the acronym HERO for our PBIS, and that stands for being honest, empathetic, respectful of our actions. Throughout our PBIS program, we do a number of things to support positive behaviors happening in our school and structures with that. We use what we call Hero Tickets to reinforce those schoolwide expectations that we see happening in our school and in our classrooms. Through those Hero Tickets, that students can earn individually or as a class, they have an opportunity to spend them on different things, which couldn't be different reward times. We have a Hero Store ran by our school counselor with help with some students sometimes. And that is truly just a collection of donated items that, uh, as you know, kids, kids like to collect trinkets and whatever it is. So they think, no matter what we have in that store, they think it's very special. So they're excited to earn their Hero Tickets to spend at the school store, which has an opportunity to shop at one time a month. We have Ranger Reward Time, which is something that we put into place last year. We just as a school knew that we had some behaviors ramping up schoolwide. And so comes spring break time, we just came together as a staff to see what we wanted to do to make some adjustments with our expectations and put some structures in place to address those behaviors. So we became up an opportunity for students to earn a weekly Ranger Reward Time, which is simply an extra 20 minutes of choice time at the end of the week. We, as a grade whole or as a building, each grade whole will kind of run that each week. Sometimes it was activities outside, sometimes it was different activities that teachers will host in their classrooms. But just a way to have students just be reminded more often about what our expectations are here at the school day and reward goals that we're meeting most weeks. One of the things our students look most towards too is our Heroes of the Month Celebration that we have. We call them our Ranger Rallies. And if you ever have an opportunity to come by at the end of the month to do this, it's really fun. We have, um, when we hit COVID, we had to change everything that we had to do in order and everything virtually. And we learned a lot from that and some of the positive things that came from opportunities to do some things virtually. So we've changed how we host our monthly Ranger Rallies. And now we take an opportunity, uh, each staff member in the building has an opportunity to nominate a Ranger of the Month. And each month we focus on different character or character traits or just themes that we want to focus on depending on what culture our building is going. So sometimes it's just being a good citizen. Sometimes it's finishing strong, perseverance, being kind, whatever we decide as a team we want to focus on for a month. And staff members will nominate a student. And we will start off our Hero Rallies online through Google Meet and all those classes are in the classroom. And I'm online presenting and surprising the students through slideshow, which students are being recognized. And they come on down to the office, they get their certificate and Hero T-shirt that's provided by our, our PTA. And then we have, after that, we have a Hero Rally. So all the heroes around the office and all the classes line the hallways. And we put on a theme song for the month over the intercom. And we do one quick loop around our school. And as the hero promenades around the building, we end up in a gym in a big circle to go over a few expectations or preview for the month ahead and to do some other celebrations that might be happening that we want to recognize the students and staff. So students really enjoy that. And it's an opportunity. You'll see there, uh, we take pictures of each of the heroes and post them in our bulletin board and on our social media and on our website with our Hero picture for you. So we love that. There you can see the picture. That's me in the center as we circle into the gym and circle up to talk about the celebrations for the month and making predictions for the month ahead. So that's what that was. Next, I wanted to showcase our student ambassadors. Throughout the years, our student council has looked a little bit different depending on, on interest or the number of students involved. Currently, we have what we now call our student ambassadors. This here is a picture of six graders involved in the program last year. And it's just an opportunity for them to become, uh, to grow some leadership skills within our building, which has been great to see in the leadership. We really like it to be student ideas and student focused. So they have come up with things that they feel like they want to do in our school, which was awesome. We had it in the years called a food drive, but the students really wanted to do that last year. So we, during the month of November, held a food drive for our service project. We'll see there, and some of it's cut off, but we had, we were just overwhelmed with the number of donations that we got this year. And we had two truckloads of products that we were able to donate to the community helping hands at Forest Lake. And they were so, um, so honored to be chosen to have those donations. As they said, that time of year is always a time where they didn't need that donation. So their shelves were getting empty. So it was perfect timing to help our community and our students. They'd be more proud of that. Also, in the month of February, we have some kindnessing activities to start kindness throughout our building. And then each, each year they pick the focus for the end of the year of a topic that they want to do presentations on to the rest of the students in our school, each of the classes. And this year, um, they chose, um, a presentation on how to be an upstander. So being a positive role model and how to address situations when other students are in their class or at recess or gym always might be making their choices, what you can do as an upstander to step in and to help them make a better situation. So that's what they decided their presentation was on. And they had a opportunity to rotate through the different classes in the month of May to get those presentations. So they're proud of that. I wanted to highlight, um, many of you know of the DARE education program, but we at Forest Lake Elementary in collaboration with Forest Lake Police Department, we don't use the DARE program, but we do use a program that the Forest Lake Police Department has identified as something they feel meets the needs of what they want our students to be aware of and lessons learned. So they kind of change that each year depending on some new things that they learn and such. So we have our fifth grade classes, um, paired up with a different officer from Forest Lake meeting. And they come in and do a series of lessons. And here's just a picture of one of our fifth grade classes last year as they celebrated their last class. And that's why we're very thankful for the cooperation we have with Forest Lake Police Department and the work that they continue to do as Something fun we do to support literacy in our building is what's called Global Read Allow. And we've been doing this, I think this will be our third or fourth year. And this is something that one of our teachers had learned about on a social media site. It's a global read aloud is a program that teacher from, I'm not sure where she's from, um, kind of organizes this and classes. But what it is, is for a different age levels. There's different books chosen that are highlighted for the year. And if you decide to participate, um, you read the book as a class. And so all of our fourth and sixth grade, fourth or sixth grade classrooms read the same chapter book. And then, uh, schools and classrooms in around our country and around our world are reading that same book. So it's an awesome opportunity just to connect through literacy with others that are reading the same book. So I'm highlighting here what book we will be reading this year. It's called a Rover Story. And a little brief from the book is you'll see Rover there is, this is a device that was created by NASA that is going off on a space mission. And he's, um, doing some certain things and learning about how to communicate and all that stuff. So it's a lot of how it ties in science and ties into a bunch of different things and communication. So our classrooms will be reading this book this year and connecting with the author and with other classrooms around the world about this literature. So what we are planning to do this year, teachers will have an opportunity, this happens in the month of whatever, if you want to participate in the worldwide event, but you don't have to do that. Just still other opportunities to collaborate. So we're thinking that some of our, um, grade levels will actually decide to tie it into unit five of our benchmark of master because it ties more directly into, um, the science and technology that focuses, that's a major starting unit five. So that's what we're looking for this year. We're excited about that. Each year, one of the fun traditions we have at Forest Lake Elementary is what we call Arts and Academics Night. It's always hosted about the third week in April, which is opportunity for students to showcase a lot of the learning that they've had throughout the year. And it's also an opportunity for students to showcase some of their talents that they might have from outside of the school that they don't always have an opportunity to share here in the school day through kind of like a talent show. So. We have many different categories that students are able to display or showcase their work from writing to collections to artwork that they've done. We have a lot of live performances from instruments to singing to dancing to, um, people with magic. So just a variety of different things. It's always a really fun event. It's a huge turnoff for our school. This past year, we tied it into our literacy night, um, which was a great way to get students and families into our building to learn about some of the things that we're doing within our Title I program as well. And we had an opportunity to have some student demonstrations like you'll see there and just fun ways for our families to get involved in our school and to see what's going on and share the talented things that are concerned. We have a, we're very fortunate for the support that we get from our PTA. And we have a combined PTA with Forest View, uh, since we have the same families from both schools. We have a combined PTA. This is highlighting some of the things that they do each year. We have a, an annual turkey big wheel event. That is one of our biggest fundraisers. One of the fun ways for families from their school. So that's always a fun member. Our other fundraiser that we have is a Readathon. And we've been going on that for three years now, which is an opportunity for, not only for us to celebrate Island Read Month, but also to hit kids at the age of reading. And it's been a fun and easy way for our PTA to raise some funds to support our school as well. Each year, our, our PTA, uh, provides us an opportunity to host artist residence. And we have that kind of going on a three-year rotation of something within the arts or sciences. Last year, we had artists residence that came in to a project with each of the classrooms, which was a great opportunity for kids to get some more art in the class. And we really enjoyed that. And then we've had a family fun night over the years. And that's kind of changed all that's looked. But the last two years, we wanted an opportunity of just for fam, it used to be a fundraiser for us. And then we decided we didn't, we had enough money that we don't need to make another fundraiser, but we wanted an opportunity for families still to just come and get involved and have fun and hang out together. So we moved it to the springtime and we have hosted this the last few years now. It's, even in the two years that we've done this now, it's really grown. We bring in some funky houses. We bring in some food trucks for families. We have a DJ there, some fun game games to, to come out. And I will say it's probably the one event that has had the highest attendance of families from all of our backgrounds coming to just come hang out, spend time together and enjoy. Um, we invited Forest Lake Police Department, uh, Forest Lake Fire Department this year. They brought some of their equipment for kids to just kind of check go and do a tour of some of the things and have an opportunity to make those positive connections. So that was a really fun event. We're hoping to continue to build that nature. Something I'm really excited about to introduce to you is, um, it's been kind of going on two years now, but we are very, very close to the installation of this through Washington County Ship Grant, uh, funds from that and also through some funds through our PTA. We're going to be installing a disc golf course in our, um, in our grounds. You'll see there kind of a map you can. There's going to be, we currently have funds to install 12 different disc golf baskets. And those are spread out from kind of the north side of our, um, green space all the way down through the green space over Forest View. So those will be the locations. We worked with the grounds crew to determine places that it won't interfere with other things that might be going on. This will be an opportunity for our client classes, um, here in recess. And also we're really excited because disc golf is one of those lifetime sports that seems to be continuing to grow. And we're really excited for an opportunity for our community to also just come through weekends and evenings to enjoy or in the summertime to enjoy this fun activity. So we're excited about this. Uh, it's been fun to collaborate. We have a former student, Alex, uh, who went through Forest Lake, went to, went to elementary and then came to Forest Lake Elementary now as a student at Forest Lake High School, but through, uh, this is going to be his Eagle Sculpt project to install this and part of that. So it's really exciting to have a student like that back. He's has a, I think, a group, some friends that are going to help him to get back to the school as part of that project. So that's really exciting. And then just looking ahead, a little snapshot to the upcoming year, we currently have 332 students enrolled and as you know, we're grades four, four through six. Uh, we have four sections of each grade level, three of them being the regular sections and one section of Spanish immersion plus in each of the grades. And then next week, we are excited, um, as each of the schools are going to be bringing teams of teachers together to go through school and planning, our school group and planning process. Uh, we will be looking at a bunch of data next week, including our behavior data, our attendance data, our academic achievement data to set some goals for the upcoming school year. So we're excited that students are going to be here in about a month and looking forward to all the positive things that'll happen again this year. Any questions?
What you were doing for your PBIS, this is a lot of hero. That's really cool. And the photo frame was really cool. Hidden, I think, you know, maybe as a little car, like a football car, baseball car. So that was, that was really cute. And the parade through the hallways just to celebrate and music over the intercom. That's really cool. Very innovative. I like that a lot.
So you were saying that, uh, you were, I'm not, you were going to get together and set targets for next year. I'm assuming you also did that for this year. How did that, where do you see kinds of struggles?
Sure. So last year, our goal was our own literacy, as most schools were. Uh, we did not, we did not make our target goal that we had, um, set for our achievement goal. We did see great parts of growth within our data, within our reading data. And as you know, with implementation of the curriculum, we often see a dip. And we were happy to see that we did not, or happy to see that we did not see the dip that you could expect. But we didn't, we didn't get a 4% growth that we, or 4% increase in achievement that we had set. Um, we can, we just tried that. So, um, we don't have, we predicted exactly what would happen. We probably went to, um, setting a goal of 4%, knowing that we were going to do a great one. But we, we have to set, we have to set goals high too. And we set it as a team. That's where we wanted to set that at, knowing that it's going to be a hard year with implementation. But we worked really hard and we did see a lot of positive things happen.
I just wanted to say that you, you really implement the PBIS with fidelity at your school and your building. Do you feel like that has had a strong impact on, you know, you here and your girls?
I do. I, you know, we, we always see a flow of what targeted behaviors increase and decrease. So, um, it's one of those things that the work is never done. But, uh, each year or each month, when we sit down and plan and look at our data, we try to come up creative ways to address the peaks that we're seeing because it does change. Traditionally, our month of November has always been the most challenging for behavior. And last year we put some things in place that had some more timely centers, like weekly instead of monthly. And we saw a decrease there. But then when we did that, we didn't continue that after winter break, then we saw another increase. So we, you know, we're always trying to figure out how we could best respond and be proactive because it does make a difference when you do that. So it has made a difference.
I follow your social media. Those hero pictures are always really cute. And I see a lot of pictures of you as well in reading in classrooms. I know your literacy is very, your ability is very strong with your literacy program.
Yeah, we've had, uh, one thing I did, I like here, which I should have done because it's great. Um, Lindsay Perron is one of our setting three specialist teachers. And she does a possible ground, all leaders, leaders in literacy where she invites different leaders throughout the district to come in and do, uh, a read aloud of students in her program. And it has made a tremendous impact on their engagement and the connections that they're making. So yeah, we have a really strong group of teachers at our building, um, both in a general and a specialist setting that are really hard to do. We're best to be proud of.
Thank you for all your leadership and all your staff dedication. Um, I was at two events there. Julie, you remember Corbin and I went to the turkey game. We packed. We, we just like waved at you two. The principals were way up on the stage handing out the turkeys. And also the Art and Academic Fair was very well attended and such unique and fun things going on in your building. So congratulations. That's just a wonderful year and not a bad mark.
Would you like speaking about the behavior intervention in a little bit more detail, both on the reactive and the proactive side, the different types of things you're doing at the building?
Sure. So, uh, the PBIS is the, all the proactive stuff that we're doing. Uh, so with that, it comes down to creating some expectations. Uh, so what we do is we sit down as a team and create a framework of what those expectations are in each of the areas of our building, from hallways to different hallways, cafeteria, bus, inside areas, outside areas, classroom. Um, and we just will go over those with students at the beginning of the year and encourage teachers to continue to reinforce those throughout the year. So that's, PBIS is all the proactive work that we do, um, our own behaviors. When it comes to more reactive stuff, we have a system in place. Uh, we utilize our, our BIS, our behavior interventionist that we have had now for a few years. Um, our building has done some work, um, around what's called, uh, role of responsibility. It's called responsibility centered discipline is the framework that we've, um, been using. And we have seen some great success with that. I found when we brought in Larry Thompson, who did some professional development with that, um, it's really about providing teachers with ways to have conversations with students that, um, in a way that shows empathy, that shows, uh, like keeping that connection, uh, but addressing the behavior and addressing the issue that whatever the traction might be, um, is a way that, and so it's a, it's called give and five. So you have a give and five conversation. You have these five topics in every conversation. And the purpose or the, the hope of that is to eliminate or to reduce them on a time that the kid is out of the classroom. So these are conversations that you might just pull them over at the side classroom. You might pull them away for a minute and have this conversation. But if that kid continues to have those challenges, um, our process is the teacher will call the office and say, I need solutions from support. And then we will respond accordingly. And that's going to be a combination of myself, our school counselor, our BIS. Our plan, if we're staffed and everyone's in place, or we need them, myself or the counselor, we'll go get the student, walk into the, um, BIS, Mr. Jones, that we have a student that we need support with. So we meet, we bring the student back to, uh, or meet him in his room. And then we go back to that teacher. Uh, and part of that process is to go ahead, to have the conversation with the teacher. Okay, tell us one of your conversations that you had. And we, we try to keep this really quick because we don't want to interfere with the instruction as well. But we have a little sheet here. We take quick notes about those five areas that they covered in the conversation. Um, and that really helps us because oftentimes if a teacher says, I'm frustrated with this kid, I'm sending him to the office or send him to behavior intervention support, they come down for that support. It's like that, that triangle of communication of teacher saying this, student saying this, and we have no idea what's going on. You try to address the behavior as much as you can. But if you don't hold the background information, you're not really getting to the problem. So in that conversation that you have with the teacher, you write down, and you take notes as good as we can. And we bring that information. Not only is that good for that teacher to reflect on, maybe, maybe I did miss that, the good part of that conversation. I need to get better at that next time because that is important to, um, make sure I identify what my expectation is. Or maybe I identify what is the problem or. But then we bring that information back to Mr. Jones, and he has that information that to agree with the student, um, to, for that student to come up with what is their solution going to be in order to fix the problem and to get back to class because our goal is always to, usually on a time or three. That has had a tremendous impact on our student behavior. I, just our response behavior hasn't, that's, you know, being more reactive in that way. But having that system in place, which we didn't have when I started in the building, um, it's just been so helpful because you, you need some type of system. You need consistency and you need teachers to know that you're supporting them. And you need to know, and they need to know that, um, there's going to be some follow-ups so they understand what happened. Now, what can be hard for teachers is that when they come back to the class, um, they need to trust the process and that whatever was done with Mr. Jones or myself or Mrs. Armitage, that it's done and it's time for move on. And now that they're in the class, that means they have to back to class and they have a fresh start. And they should go back and, and rehack that with the student because oftentimes that just, you know, that hero coming back. So it takes trust within the system. It takes trust within our team. But we have seen some good results from that. Um, and it is something with new staff. It's, you know, that continual trying to keep everyone up to date on the professional development can be, can be challenging. But, um, it is something we've made a commitment to kind of do. Um, we practice this as a staff. Our staff meetings is what these conversations look like. So we'll take roles as the student, the teacher and kind of bystanders to help support the teacher practicing those conversations. Because it isn't natural to have a conversation about making sure you get all those five things. So having those opportunities to practice and the time and the setting that, um, you know, because as a teacher or a staff member, when that gets escalated, it's easy, it's natural for our, for us to react and our emotions to get high too. But we have to mirror that, that calmness because, um, if we're not hearing that calmness from them, it's, it's going to be a powerful struggle that you're not going to win. So, um, the work we've done around that, once again, it's not done. We're always working to get better at it, but it has made an impact on our building.
Thank you. Such a thorough answer. And if you have all the questions, but it's probably best if we take it offline and communicate a little more.
We have to.
Thank you. You answered all my follow-up questions. I mean, your answers.
I just want to say, I, I appreciate the goal. And interestingly enough, the fact that it wasn't achieved. And the reason that it wasn't, that, that, that I appreciate that it wasn't achieved is if we're always achieving the goal, then maybe we're not trying hard enough. Alright? So to not reach a goal on occasion is okay because it means we set high goals and we strive for them. And I appreciate with new curriculum that we actually made progress versus what we anticipated and knew that going in when we got new curriculum. And we anticipated a, a level of learning on the teacher's side on how to implement that curriculum and a dip. So to not see that is awesome. And I appreciate that we set a goal high enough that it was a challenge and not just, hey, let's, let's just put it at one or 2% because we know we can do that and we look good. That doesn't actually get us where we want to go. And it's also, again, you answered the question I was going to ask, uh, but I appreciate that the disc golf will be open to the public in the evenings and on the weekends because it just gives one more opportunity for the community to, to see and utilize our facilities outside of just teaching students. So it's always nice to, we can incorporate more opportunities for the community.
Yeah, if you follow that, we, we have four more students hanging out all the time anyway. So we figured, let's give them some positive things to do there instead of just hanging out. So we're excited for things.
Yeah, Senator Peterson, keep this up very nicely. So I feel like we need to get the ball here. What is the goal for this year?
That's going to come next week. So, um, our teams are coming together on Monday and Tuesday to review the data. We haven't had a chance to review all that as a team yet. So if I were to make a prediction, we'll probably stick with literacy just because we have some traction there. We want to continue that. Uh, but we will be setting those goals. Start to take a look at that, uh, next week. And then our, we always have those goals pretty firm by the start of school, but we do want all teachers' voices to be part of that. Part of our QCOM plan is to get teacher voices. And so by the end of September, we always have that finalized. Uh, but I guess when we make predictions, it's going to be our literacy.
I agree with Senator Peterson that I'd like to see an aggressive goal, even if we don't achieve it. I'm going to give 98%. The way there is pretty good too.
If I could just highlight, uh, this new we're speaking to Monday and Tuesday next week with Forest Lake Elementary School Improvement Plan coming together, team coming together. We'll be doing that across all our elementaries, middle school, high school, and community school, all together, working with state person who is leading that continuous improvement effort. And then we'll be working with leadership team to lead school, be setting those targets and those strategies. those targets and those strategies.
Can you tell us about the award you received?
Oh, well. So I have been really involved in MSBUD, which is Minnesota Elementary School Principal Association. And we, last year I got elected to be our state rep for that through the national association. So we had an opportunity to go out to DC and march as an executive team from Minnesota, as an advocacy conference, to have a meeting with a lot of state legislators or to our state senators and legislators out there around all the schools and what we're, you know, what, just have that open conversation with them, have an opportunity to do that. So the words we got out there was just the increased membership that the state of Minnesota has and recognizing the members of Minnesota. So that was exciting. Just this last week, I did get nominated and elected to be our Zone Seven rep for the national organization. So Zone Seven includes Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, Nebraska, Wyoming, Montana, Colorado, and Alaska. So I have an opportunity to work with state leaders from each of those states around the work that we're doing in our schools and to help advocate for public schools across the country. So I'm really excited with that opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add one more thing that I forgot to earlier. So I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, but what I think is, I really know, I would admire about your leadership is that you understand the importance of relationships with students and you know, you know as you work and know the same things with your staff. And I think that's why we've had a lot of success and you forward that, your belief.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to positive happening. Does anybody have anything to share? A little summer, not a lot going on. Good to have fun.
One thing.
Go ahead.
It was night two night on Tuesday. So it did rain right at six o'clock when all the groups were gathering. But I did go out to the American Legion representing substance abuse, substance prevention education coalition speak, or however it's said, and brought up some things. We saw FLD was there, the Sons of the American Legion were doing protests and votes. And we had a bike raffle for the kids that were there. It was very small gathering due to the rain. And then I hit a couple of cul-de-sacs in my neighborhood. Some more of pretty good ways from that group.
Thank you. I was also at the National, or the Night United on Tuesday night, just in my local neighborhood. And I forget his last name, the officer from, the resource officer from the middle school was there. And then the intern who just finished up from the high school was there. So that was really great to see that participation. And then this past week, over at CANDA had a chance to be over there. The new kindergarteners are coming in to meet with the teachers to do a little assessment of reading and math. And Heidi Bieber was there. She's a language.
Literacy coach.
Literacy coach. Thank you. And she was talking about how there's a new book that they're using to assess kindergarteners. And CANDA in Columbus are piloting, piloting it. Excuse me. It's just like a little board book to help do a quick assessment. But that was exciting. And some of the kids were so excited. And also throughout the district, which is so adorable, they're doing a signing for the kindergarteners. So like in front of, you know, a banner that says Forest Lake in the back, they sit in front of that and sign a certificate with this really big huge pencil and they sign their name. And then when they're a senior, if they go to college or sports or whatever they do, or the military, then they have a signing date for that. So they were saying, you know, you can have a picture of your kindergartner and a picture. So whoever's idea that was, I guess they were doing a district-wide. It was adorable. So that was really fun.
That sounds so fun.
And anything else? Remember Tyson wanted to report on nine sixteen too. And since the sun on the agenda, it would be a positive happening.
Yeah, well, you do have a first day. But anyway, we had our meeting last night and we did, preceding our regular meeting, we had a scanning gathering with, based on the new strategic plan that they have out. So that was kind of nice. And the time of radio is supporting them before. So it gave us an opportunity to, to actually talk to each other and not via the door table. We had presentations and discussions. We had a legislative update from Valerie, a lobbyist for the intermediate. We discussed their twenty twenty twenty-three QCOM results. We had an update on their strategic actions impact report, which is very good. And then we had first reading of several policies. We also had review and approval of the superintendent's evaluation for twenty twenty-three. Also approved the e-learning days for twenty-three, twenty-four, where they do have to look at ours and analysis. And then there also in the donations for nine sixteen, there was a donation from Steve Brenner of Forest Lake. He's from Forest Lake and was the Forest Lake manager of the office to nine sixteen. And that concludes my report.
All right. Then we'll move on to reports. We have a transportation update for Director Member Heidi.
Hello, board members. So excited to be here tonight to talk about our transportation department. I'm going to go over some staffing, both leadership and our drivers. I'm going to talk about our bus routes, our opt-in and number of routes this year. And then I'm going to give a quick update on the parent app that we're looking at for bus tracking. So as we're starting out, our transportation supervisor position is now open. We posted that on July twenty-seventh. We currently have just over ten applications and a mix of internal and external candidates. So a sought-after job, which is something we can find. We also, we'll have interviews mid-August for that. We've sent out invitations for the interview committee. And people are getting back to us with availability on that. We posted yesterday our transportation safety coordinator position, and we'll interview for that late August. So we're hoping to maybe let that new person have a little bit of context in that to be able to fill the leadership roles in our transportation area. Staffing, so drivers. Our returning drivers route up a little different this year. We're currently in the process of calling all drivers and substitutes to confirm attendance at our open day. So in the past, we haven't necessarily taken this step, but we just know the importance of avoiding cancellations this year. So we're calling to make sure who's going to be there and who's going to bid. So we know how to set up our routes. And so we're also planning our welcome back in service and getting that going with all of our safety reminders and information for our bus drivers. We anticipate about sixty returning drivers and about ten substitutes coming back for us. So that's our returning pool. On our new front, this is amazing, over twenty-five people have started our bus training program in the last six months, which is huge. Yes. So huge shout out to our interim safety coordinator, Kelly, who has been working really hard on that. Also all of our staff that have attended Arts in the Park and other events are driving with us and other events that have happened. So great recruiting going on out there. What that means in that twenty-five is ten to twelve of those people will be ready to drive on the first day of school. It is a five to six week process to get them licensed. And that is hard. So we have to have them in place in July in order to get them into that first day of school. So we're still in need of looking at three to five additional drivers. We currently have four to five drivers in training that will be ready around October first. So we know that we're looking at opportunities to contract out. We'll talk about in the next slide and other ways to make sure that our drivers equal our routes. And so, but again, really positive with the number of new bus drivers and interest that we have in the area. So as we go into our bus routes, we started opt-in this year. And so we started this early spring with multiple, multiple communications to families, newsletters, my principal, emails, all of that. Over the summer, we've done two targeted communications with people in our district who were assigned a bus stop in our system last year but have not opted in yet. And so we did two targeted communications to that. Through all of that process, we have about just over fifty-nine hundred responses and out of about sixty-five. And so what we're looking to do now is to follow up at the building and drive a lot. So even our bus drivers know our kids really well. So we're sending them the list and saying, hey, you've driven the same route for the past decade, you know, like who on this list is missing that you know is coming back and we need to connect with. So working really hard in every student that we can on that list and opt-in. The forum on the internet has closed in order to opt-in. So you don't have to call the bus garage now and get that done. And that's just because we're in the middle of routing, which means we need to add the kid in one system and the other system at the same time. So that just requires a call to the bus garage to do that.
And Chrissy, a parent is never too late to get a bus stop.
Correct. Yep. So we are, we are at the point this summer that first day of school is going to start to be, unless you're new enrolling, it's going to start to be difficult. We might have to send you to a stop that's a couple of blocks away for the first couple of days of school. But then we'll get you within two to three days. We'll get that bus stop all set. So, yep, exactly. And we are making sure our buses do have enough room to account for this. So there might be, we know with opt-in being the first year, that we might need a couple of extra seats as we're getting used to this process. And we have accounted for that in our routing.
Chris, I have a point to make on that. We did opt-in through the regular process. We received the targeted communications in any way. We responded to the email. The individual listed the email. We got a reply back saying, I've got a summer vacation. I'll come back in September.
Oh, okay.
You might want to look at that because I imagine if I, I students aren't taking ones.
Yeah.
So.
Please shoot me that information because we'll. Okay. So yeah, please shoot me the information and let me know who it came from because that's really important to us. Because yeah, that's not something we want to see at all and not something that I've heard yet. So very important. Thank you.
Superintendent just said that we'll get a route.
Yep.
I had a parent that would just say something about opting with the bus. And I wasn't sure what the parameters or the guidelines were. So if they opt-in this coming week, they might get shifted to.
They'll likely have a bus stop.
Okay.
Yep. So it's, yeah, yeah. But I just, we're to the point in summer though, early August, where we're routing, we have to, you know, kind of draw a line and figure out. But yeah, we're, we're still good now. And as I said, new enrollees, we always have worked with, you know, up to the last minute. And again, it's also going to, we know how big our district is. We know that there's some, you know, things that take us well outside our routes and stuff. So sometimes there's an easy fix. Sometimes it's a little bit. But again, we will have a bus. That's the main point is that we will get them a bus.
Yeah. The response will never be, you missed a deadline. I'm sorry you're not going to have a bus. It'll be, we build routes. It's going to take us a day or two to get you all into our system. So be patient and in the meantime.
Exactly. At least John Miller, that's fifty-nine.
So shout out to our communications coordinator for helping us through that process and getting those out. So, yeah.
As a, as a parent, I don't know how you missed the communication. They had a really kind of good job making sure that everybody had seen it.
I have a correction. I'm sorry I missed what it was. The immunization email that I responded to that I got the reply from. DN one, remember Peterson just mentioned. There's no missing it. Going through the process. We did continue to give targeted emails though. But we know the form is closed. We just kind of dropped it. So.
Is there a way that parents can reach out to make sure that they are?
Yes. So they can reach out to the bus garage and double check for sure. We are in the process, exciting with our technology department for the first time since we've had Versatrans, which has been just about fifteen years now. We're at the process of integrating the two systems together. And so likely in the next couple of weeks, we're going to go live where parents are going to get to see bus information, even in the parent view area of Synergy. I know, it has been a good year. And so we are so excited about that. And so that would also help with, did I opt-in or not? Didn't. So, yep, we are chugging along and getting communication going. All right. The next one, bus routes. So we ended the year with seventy-five bus routes, sixty regular ed routes, fifteen special ed routes. As I've been saying, we are working really hard on routing. Donna Clark, our router, has been working hard along with Tanya Moxness, our special ed router. And so it'll be somewhere between sixty-eight and seventy-two routes to start the school year. And again, that'll fluctuate between the regular and the special ed. And so again, our job is to make sure routes equals drivers. And so that is what we are doing. So to that, opt-in produced about a reduction to two to three buses, which is great. Again, people, we just assigned everyone a bus, but they didn't necessarily do that. In an area that is really rural, buses could go well out of their way to not pick up a student for a while. And that doesn't work. So opt-in is a great way to help with that. Also, another tactic that our router was brilliant in is routing rural buses to pick up students in high density areas on the way to the high school. So we know our secondary tier is where we struggle with drivers. So we have less elementary than we do secondary. And so when we look at the secondary, and that includes the charters and the non-publics. And so what we do with that is we have something out in Scania, something out in Linwood. And then what we're able to do is pick up twenty kids within an hour, which is a real thing, like twenty to twenty-two kids, takes an hour to pick up. But what we're able to do then is get into town, pick up forty kids at one apartment building and get to the school. And so before, we didn't always do that practice. And so now we're able to make that happen. So it's a great way to do it. Strategically using contracted transportation for our special ed routes, again, talking about how do we make sure drivers equal that? We can use contracted transportation as our driver count goes up. I said we have some coming in October. We'll have some coming in November, December. Then what we're able to do is take those routes back from the contractor, which is exactly what we want to do. So we know what we need to do and then how to get it back. So, yeah.
I have a question. Isn't there how long a student can be on the bus?
There's, we have policy, yeah, we have guidelines, but there's not a set test to be.
Okay.
Yep.
As a student who grew up rural, I know the hour and a half bus route looks like.
I don't think we'll get on a bus for an hour. Maybe close in some cases, fifty.
That's because my head of parents said something about my kid was on the bus for an hour and fifteen minutes. And then I was incorrect. And I said, no, I think there's rules that it can be just an hour.
Yeah. So if you hear that, truly contact us and let us know that. Because that's not the, normal Forest Lake is going to be under that. Yes, they're not built to do that on a snow day. That is a blizzard. I'm going to tell you, yes.
Yeah, for sure. But Lenny said that I just wanted to be able to.
Not the way it's built. So let us know because we want to address it.
Yeah.
Yep. Last thing is just an update. We're in the final stages of reviewing two options for a parent bus tracking apps. And then we hope to activate at the first day of school for the start of the school year. So we know bus, it's, bus tracking apps are really interesting. They, a lot of them are just not great. And so we experienced it somewhat with Here Comes the Bus and others. So we're really working to find the best one, what's going to work with integrating with our systems and all of that. And so it is a big project. It's not as simple as there's ten companies that are perfect and you pick what you want. It's making sure that all of our components, which are different for each school district, some might have synergy, some might have Skyrith, some might have other student systems, and then also transportation systems. So we have to make sure that three components line up to go to that bus app to make it work. And so, as I said, it took a little longer than we like, but we should be up until those days.
Shout out to Haley Lang and her research work there.
There you go. You nailed it. Yep. So.
I have a number of parents asking about this because this was initially supposed to come in January. So can you give us a really brief recap on what happened? Are we going to make September?
Yeah. So that is a good question. And so what happened is that we were looking to our company. So we got security cameras that were installed later than we thought because of the buses coming in due to supply chain issues. So they were supposed to be in in August. They didn't get here until October-ish. And so we didn't install our cameras until December. Our original thought, when we heard that Here Comes the Bus was going away, they were a three G network that went down. And so we couldn't no longer use them. So we knew we had to get a new one. So we were working with our security company and a company called Tripspark to be able to get a parent app going. What we learned was they weren't as integrated. I talked about those three systems. They weren't as integrated as what's presented to us. And so therefore, they were trying to integrate throughout the spring and kept giving us dates of they would be available. And they kept missing the mark, missing the mark. And so that was, we made a point in time where we said, no, we're done. We're not going to do it with you because you can't produce the product that you're telling us between the partnership of two four seven and Tripspark. So we went on to looking at other apps this spring with Haley Lang who helped us out at the bus garage.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is that you?
Yes, it is. I, oh, no. One more time. And that is thanks to the amazing staff at the bus garage. Long hours recruiting, long hours routing. I mean, just heart and soul into that building. And so I have to do a shout out to them.
My daughter was a summer school and that was what they wanted. And it was really nice.
I just want to comment on the fact that it's clear that our work with CISO is going to produce some results. And just the opt-in portion and the money we spend will easily be saved in fuel in one year. Just fuel, not to mention that we have three less buses on the road and environmental impacts and cost of maintenance and all those pieces that go with three buses. So. Environmental impacts and cost of maintenance and all those pieces that go with three buses, so. That's impressive. Remember, I see that some.
Well, just what you were saying is that the dear information that it is being integrated and implemented into all this work we're doing in is, it is powerful.
See it again, my bus needs to be coming up later tonight. So yes, very, very great work.
Comments or questions? Thank you so much, Director Emery.
Thank you.
We move on to the superintendent report, Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take this time on behalf of the school district and school board to offer our deepest condolences to the family of Dorisha Bailey-Gratt, our community school student who was killed earlier in July. Dorisha was a joyful student with tremendous potential. She'll be deeply missed in our school community. Earlier today, we had a meeting with the Minnesota Department of Transportation. It took us all summer to find the right people and to get the meeting scheduled with the Department of Transportation to discuss traffic issues and concerns on Highway 97 in front of Scandia Elementary. I was joined by Director Lender Peity and Bill Schwartz, who happy to have been on the Scandia boundary of other departments. He knows that stretch of road directly from that work and obviously knows our building site there. Also attending the meeting was Principal Parafell, and the parent who was involved in the accident resulting in significant injuries to her son and her daughter. Minnesota Department of Transportation staff shares some background information on safer schools and opportunities along with potential options to address present safety concerns on the stretch of highway in front of Scandia Elementary. They will be coordinating the next meeting involving other Mindon staff, Washington County staff, and engineers and leadership from the city of Scandia. In the meantime, Principal Parafell is working with Bill Schwartz and the city of Scandia to redesign parent pickup and drop-off resulting in parents exiting the school to the east of the school and migrating to a Linda Trail where they will pick up the controlled intersection access to Highway 97. So I think some significant safety improvements have to start the year. And we just need to continue to press Mindon and Washington County to do everything they can. It's gonna involve engineering studies, speed studies, traffic, all. These things don't move quickly. If we never start the process, we'll never get something done. So we've got the ball moving and we have some of the right people coming in. As you know, the start of the school year is just around the corner. I know kids listening, there are a lot of kids who listen to the school board. And I'm sure that comes as welcome news to them. The All Staff Back-to-School Workshop will be held on Tuesday, August 29th at 7:30 AM in the auditorium. The back-to-school speaker will be Dr. Adolf Brown, somebody who heard him at the NSBA conference made last year. This event will be sponsored by the different vendors who support the school district. So please mark your calendar and plan to be there. Board Chair Peterson will address the staff and it'll be nice to recognize the board at that time as well. First day of school for K. 6 and grade 7 and 8 will be Tuesday, September 5th, and all students, September 6th. And lastly, Growing TEFLA event on September 6th at Waldock Farms starting at 5:30 PM. As you know, TEFLA is the education foundation that provides grants to educators to bring innovative ideas and innovative projects to kids in the classroom. And all money raised will be awarded to classroom teachers. This year's grant will be the ESKESK playground at the Education Center. Please mark your calendar, bring your wallet or your credit card. Time to come for a fund that. And that concludes my report.
Questions for Dr. Massey? None, we will watch tonight's consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve Pageant Item 7?
Ooh.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by a sign of a high.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. Motion passes, we'll move on to action items. A1, donations, Member Christensen.
Yes, we had again, some really generous donations, as always, from our community members. So, a $5,000 donation from TCT Transport for some back-to-school events. $1,885 and a penny from the Forest Lake Football Booster Club. Payment for the lacquer project that they're doing out in the shed, by the, near the field. $1,000 from Mr. Meyer and Lindgren for the High School Environmental Club expenses. $651 from the Forest Lake Knights of Columbus to our Community Education Department. $150 from the Cedar East Beth Alliance Club for Lindwood Elementary. $100 from Mary Hammond for the Forest Lake Ranger Marching Band. $20 from Target Corporation to Lionel Lakes. $5 from Kelly Olson for Community Education. And many community members have donated to our Step Community Closet approximately $4,890 value. We had a donation of a Grillo Support Walker from Mrs. Michelle Nod for the Forest Lake Education Student Use. And paint donated by Chairman Williams, Forest Lake Paints, for painting of the stadium. For a total donation of $8,811 and a penny. And I move to approve these generous donations.
Sorry.
Motion in a second, discussion.
I just noticed it was nice to see the Cedar, Cedar East Beth Alliance Club contribution in that area.
Any other comments, discussion? If you're none, all those in favor of accepting tonight's donation, signify by a high.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. We'll move on to A2, FLEA Staff Retirement Notices. Do we have a motion for A2?
Second.
Motion in a second. I would like to recognize our one retired, Dorisha Lane, Special Education, Paraprofessional on Forestview Elementary, 30 years of service, which is quite a long time.
Yes, that's just incredible work.
Do we have any further discussion? A2? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting A2, signify by a sign of a high.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. We'll move on to A3, the 2023-24 School Board Meeting Date Adjustment. Do we have a motion on A3? Move to approve.
Second.
We have a, we have a long sheet, we have the, just for point of discussion, we need to move the June, early June meeting to May 30th because it coincides with graduation, high school graduation. We'll hold that, May 30th.
I have one comment, maybe we want to reconsider this and we want to have the board meeting as part of the graduation ceremony. Maybe we have to pull the committee again.
I like, let's be like we were on stage. Are you thinking? We're meeting on stage and then maybe everyone sit for a few more hours.
I'm seeing us and then.
It's an idea. I think they're laughing at us, not with us. But it's, it was, it's funny, that's good, yeah.
I have one question too. So with that meeting change, does that mean that we'll have three meetings in May? And was June 13th probably the middle or we just, how we do three in May? Just a question.
Would they decide to move it to June 13th, that was a better date?
On 13th.
Excuse me, 13th?
June 13th would be the following week of the original date. I'm just curious how other board members are feeling if three meetings in May, we'll still have committees?
Three through July, that's right.
I mean, I'm throwing it out there.
Well, we have the, well, not, Member Christensen.
That is a really good point, Representative Tyson, because at the end of the year in May, there's so many things, so many banquet, so many things that are going on. I think that would be a great idea, if, if that's possible. If there was just a reason to not do it.
Member Revlon?
No, I'm liking this idea. Actually, I just want to point out that we don't have to have it on Thursday, especially scheduling out, I want some advance, we could easily, you know, pick another date like the 10th, which is a Monday. Realize traditionally, we've done it on Thursdays, but that's, that's worth considering as well.
So, just to be clear, we have a motion on the floor to accept it as presented, signing change or required amendment. All right, Member Eke.
I would say that if we're going to, I'm not always changing the date in, right? But if we do that, I'd rather we had administration gonna look at that date and clear it and then we just hold on, because we don't have to hold on to it.
We can table it.
I move to table it while giving administration the directive to explore some other days. I mean, there is a possibility as well, or.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion to table in a second. Do we have discussion on the table?
We, we have. I screwed up enough, we have table until a certain point. So how about until administration can't present us with some dates, we'll take it all back.
Seven.
All right. We have a motion to table in a second. All those in favor of tabling the motion, signify by a high.
Aye.
Most, ayes have it. We will table that until we get some further information from administration. We'll move on to A4, determine school board meeting number of liaisons to buildings for the 2023-24 school year. This one will, so this one's always a little messy when we do it, but I'm gonna go through these as we go and then traditionally, we have volunteered for which buildings we would like. I did not assign these out as we haven't done that traditionally. So we will start out with Columbus Elementary. Last year was Member Corcoran and Member Revlon. Is anybody interested in Columbus Elementary? Revlon would like to stay on Columbus. If nobody else, I don't, Member Corcoran's not here, we can, of course, leave her there. She would be fine with that. We'll leave there, we'll move to Forest Lake Elementary, Forest View Elementary. Last year was Member Rayfield and Member Tyson. Member Tyson would like to stay on then? Member Rayfield? Anyone else? Want to stay?
Yeah.
All right. And we will move to Lionel Lakes Elementary. Last year that was Member Hagland and Member Rayfield.
I'd like to.
You'd like to go on, Mike?
I don't think we ever did. I haven't had it for a while.
Anyone else?
I'll switch with Member Tyson, Lionel for Lindwood.
Perfect, thank you.
For Lindwood, which is coming up next. Anyone else for Lionel, or for, yeah, Lionel Lakes?
I have two. That's two, right?
That's, that's two for you, yeah.
I mean, two at Lionel.
That's two people at Lionel, correct?
Yes, okay.
That'll be you and Member Tyson at Lionel, and then Lindwood was Member Tyson. Now it'll be Member Hagland and was, Member Revlon, you want to stay there? Right, and we will move to Scandia Elementary. That was Member Christensen and Member Hagland.
I'd like to.
Okay, so we've got three more who want to get on Scandia.
Yeah, we can get four. Okay, that's fine, that's fine. I'd like to see if I could.
You can have, you can have three, we can have three. We can have four, but we can have three. He said he was good. He did, yeah. So we've got Member Hagland and Member Revlon at Scandia. And Member Christensen. Uh, then we will move to Wyoming. We had Member Corcoran and Member Hagland. I would like to get on Wyoming.
I'd like to stay.
I'd like to stay. All right, well, Member Corcoran, it's unfortunate she's not here to go in this process. And it will be myself and Member Hagland. And then we will move to the community school. We had Member Tyson on there last year. Hello? Anyone? I would be happy to join you at the community school.
I would forward to that.
Then we had the Ed. Yes. Uh, Member Tyson and myself will stay there. Uh, then we had the Education Center, that was also Member Tyson last year. Anyone interested?
I would do.
All right, Member Christensen. Are you gonna stay on, Member Tyson?
Oh, sure.
Okay. And then we had Forest Lake Area Middle School. Last year was Member Christensen and Member Revlon.
I would like to stay.
I would like to stay as well. Member Rayfield, would you like to take that one? Yeah, I would like to take that, that would be great.
All right, we will, we'll, Member Revlon and, and Member Rayfield. Then we had the Senior High School. Uh, last year was myself and Member Revlon, I would like to stay there.
I would like to stay as well.
Anyone else? We've got the high school there as well.
I have a middle school there as well, but I spend a lot of time there anyway.
Sure. Uh, we have National Transportation Office. Last year that was Member Corcoran and myself. I would like to stay on there. Anyone? We need Member Corcoran on there, then she'll have to. Then we had the Step Program, which was Member Revlon and Member Tyson. Takers?
I can stay there.
Member Revlon, anyone else? Looks like Member Revlon solo, instead.
I think, uh, our, I, did Member Corcoran stay in Wyoming as well, part of your?
I did not. I did not remove her number. She can choose later if she doesn't want to. So we have three, Member Tyson.
So what question, we typically do this in January at our board meeting? Do we switch it now to July to August?
Well, in the January meeting, we do committees. And this one, we do so we're prepared for the beginning of the year and we're in line with the school year.
Yeah, we made that switching number of years.
Okay.
Yeah.
We had new board members, so we replaced the outgoing board members.
Yeah, because I did do it last year. Okay.
I would, we approve.
Motion to approve, we have a second. Any discussion as assigned?
Well, I have one thing, I enjoy the liaisons on the website, were last updated in 2019. So if you wouldn't mind making a note to update that, I think it was just an obvious oversight.
Any further discussion? Okay, none, all those in favor of accepting the motion to approve the liaisons as discussed, signify by a sign of a high.
Aye.
Most, ayes have it. We'll move on to A. I, second, I believe I have.
Hagland.
Uh, we will move to A5, bus leasing, Director Revlon.
The interview is in, hold on, members. The Minnesota Department of Education allows us for leasing for school buses. Uh, this is due to the limiting funds to buy and replace old school buses outright. So leasing allows us to save some costs over time. And so the school district has done this practice for the past decade in leasing. And what we're recommending tonight is that we would like to lease again, so re-lease 22 of the 2022 77 passenger buses. We would also like to lease again four 2020 special ed buses, lift buses, that have air conditioning in them. And then that one is a reduction of the six buses within our special ed. So I mentioned our work last year on looking at the fleet with CISO and others. And so we're gonna be reducing six special ed buses. And then also, as part of that top one, we will be reducing seven of our 77, seven, sorry, 77 passenger buses. So administration would recommend that you approve the ability to lease these buses to Coleman Bus Company. And that is a state contract. Uh, so looking at those dollars amount, you might ask, why don't we do closed sale bids or anything? But it's through a state contract, so it's not required.
And motion 35?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, discussion. Revlon?
Of course, I always have questions, right? You may have answered this with the, being a state contract thing, but I'm looking at the paperwork here as part of the board meeting. And it looks like there's a 24-month lease. Are, are these fixed? Because it's 20,000 miles, so I'm curious, how many miles do we put on a single bus every year?
So we rotate them in that two years. So the buses that have higher miles, we put them in town the second year. And so we usually are right at that 20 and we watch it. Uh, they also have not charged us the bonus miles.
Okay, so that was my follow-up question, at 85 cents per mile, what? Do we need to look at a different type of lease model here? But it sounds like you're as aware of those numbers as I was, so.
It went up six cents for the bonus, I did, so I did a lot of research on that, making sure what are we paying?
Wonder, thank you.
Based on the last lease, yep.
Any further discussion?
I just want to add that the leasing program has been such a beneficial thing for our district. We used to drive buses that were so loud and noisy and crickety and, in fact, we just have, have this renewal and it's just been great.
And we'll be coming to the school board, we'll be talking about the next session of the 2025 buses and stocking all what we'll do there in December this year. So, yep, we're constantly looking at the fleet and getting that schedule.
I haven't forgotten, a few years ago, we got all the bad transmissions. Thankfully, they were leases, so we let them go back.
2020 to 2019, that was the model. Exactly, and so, and the warranty's still on these, and so, yeah, it is a great program to be able to do that. And then we get to choose. So last year, we know that we bought of our 77 passengers, we did buy those, because they're great, and we were able to do that through some capital notes. And so, yep, we'll look at that as we look at our 25 plan.
Any further discussion on A5? Seeing none. Member clerk, would you please say a roll call?
Sure. Tyson will sign, Member Revlon?
Aye.
Member Corcoran is asked, and Member Lindwood?
Aye.
And Member Peterson?
Aye.
And Member Christensen?
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. We will move on to A6, substitute teachers policy 417. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In an effort to address our subshortage that is ongoing for our system, administration is bringing this recommended subrate increase to you, which will allow us to be more competitive in paying our substitute teachers, as well as hopefully be in a better position to recruit substitute teachers. So by approving this recommendation, we'd be moving the current rate of 130 to 150 per day, a half-day rate from 65 to 75. And for a substitute who logged a certain number of subdays in the previous year, they would receive an increased rate of 135. Currently, we move that rate to 150. Additionally, we would like to add language to this policy that would automatically give a retired teacher a higher subrate, given the skill that they have as a retired educator or has direct experience teaching in the district. So with those changes to this policy, administration would like you to approve.
Move to approve. Motion and second, A6, any discussion?
I just have one suggestion here. This is, this is all the information we're going to talk about, or obviously not going to the first reading, second reading process, we typically follow, and I'm assuming that's due to the time we have here precisely.
And I know Director Friedman has sent out this information to the policy committee members, and because these rates are an existing policy, you could argue that it's first reading or an action item right away as an adjustment, but in order to get a head start on recruiting and getting these rates out there, we felt the urgency to bring it.
I think it's an excellent idea. I think sometimes you just got to break what you traditionally do and do what's right. So, yeah, I want everybody here to vote for it, and that's all I have to say.
Any other discussion? I would be asking, did, did anybody weigh in on the policy committee? Did we hear back from anyone?
We did hear back from a few members of the policy committee. The response was generally, can we do more? And, which we have a great deal of empathy with it, there's always a balancing, of course. So we see positive communications from the local policy committee, we were able to respond.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving A6, signify by a sign of a high?
Aye.
Most, ayes have it. Passes, we'll move to A7, short-term classified substitutes policy 434. Dr. Massey?
Yeah, in a similar fashion, we, there's need to increase the grade for classified substitute. This would include grades for custodial staff, food service, paraprofessionals, new duty, et cetera. And essentially, we're increasing present and current rates by $1 across the board for each of those positions. Administration would recommend approving.
Before anybody goes, I'd like to back up and do a roll call vote on that last vote because it doesn't involve money.
Oh, yeah.
So if we could go back to A6, and who was our motioner?
River.
Was there a second? I think you already, motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Member clerk, would you please say a roll call?
Member Christensen, aye. Member Tyson will sign, Member Revlon?
Aye.
Member Corcoran is asked, and Member Hagland?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
And Member Rayfield?
Aye.
I appreciate the step back. Only because of us dollars and the policy, I wanted to make sure we rolled call it.
I almost made that suggestion as well. That's it, I move to approve A7.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second on A7, do we have discussion? Members?
You know, it might not seem like a lot, and we're doing what we can with, with what we have, but as someone who has stuck in some of these positions, I mean, it is nice to be appreciated, and, you know, I know we have trouble getting custodians and paras, and so I think a little bit of appreciation that we're able to show here will go a long ways. Thank you.
Further discussion?
I need a bit of speaking. Oh, I missed, oh, good. Okay, I shall do that, thank you.
Do we have any, do we have any input from the policy committee on this one?
It was unethical to, I was telling you a previous one.
Not it would be, but I wanted to make sure I asked. So any further discussion? Hearing none. Member clerk, please say a roll call?
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Christensen?
Stay.
That stays, Member Tyson will sign, Member Revlon?
Aye.
Member Corcoran is asked, and Member Hagland?
Aye.
And Member Peterson?
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. We will move on, seen nothing under new business, review the upcoming calendar dates.
Okay, very good. Summer seminar is Sunday night is the Girlie Bird that I'm going to, and then Monday is the Eight Four Conferences on literacy, can give it to the director of...
Aye.
Really, from the U of M, really good. So, to see anybody, Jim and I are going to go together, but we realize we're going on different dates, so...
I'll see you there.
Okay, anybody else? Just kidding.
Thank you, and with that, a motion to a chair will be in order.
Hold.
Motion and second, all those in favor of a chairman, signify by a sign of a high?
Aye.
Now, all ayes, motion passes.